So we are now recording and welcome today for our, our Tuesday, May 12th edition of the Southwest Zone Town Hall meeting. Today, we're going to be talking with James Smith and Chris Cohen about the Southwest Zone ODP program. Of course, the ODP stands for the Olympic Development Program. And James is the head boys coach for the Southwest Zone and yeah, and Chris is the head girls coach kinda, kinda for the Southwest Zone. And again, these town hall meetings. James, Chris and I are going to have a nice little discussion about the, like about the, the various aspects of the ODP program. If you have some questions, please feel free to unmute yourself, ask like an ask away, or if, or if you want to, or if you want to ask in the chat, please go ahead and ask there. This is, if you have kind of something to add, a question or a comment, please do this. We want this to be an open forum for people to get as much information as they can. All right. Again, I'm going to, our guest speakers today are James Smith. He's the head coach at Aquatex, oh, Waterpolo is also the head boys coach for the Southwest Zone ODP. We also have Chris Cohen, who is the club director for Thunder Waterpolo and also the head girls coach for the Southwest Zone ODP. James, how are you doing today?
I'm doing well. This is my third like Zoom or whatever. So I might keel over in a moment, but yeah, I'm doing well.
It's only your third. I think people have like five or six or kind of five or six a day.
But you have much more stamina than me. Joe and I did the podcast this morning. So it's like, you know, that, that basically takes up our time for most of the, most of the day is him yelling at me for not getting stuff done.
That or about an hour. So yeah. Um, and then we have Chris, um, how are you doing?
Doing well. Well, good to be here.
Well, guys, thank you so much for joining us a little bit just right off the top. We do not have any new information for anybody as far as the girls ODP National Championships, Girls National Team Selection Camp, or the Boys National Team Selection Camp. Those are still to be determined. It is the hope of USA Waterpolo to try to schedule those kind of sometime this summer. Those are great experiences for the athletes and we do hope that we can get those in because we want those athletes to be able to have that great experience. Just, just in case people are wondering, any of the FINA events that the national teams do eventually go to have been canceled this summer as well. Okay. Thoughts on that? Chris, as far as the girls kind of, kind of ODP champs and such.
Yeah, I know USA Waterpolo is really dedicated into trying to get the, the, the national championship and any kind of NTSCI. And for the summer, so they're putting that off to the last possible moment and trying to see what the situation develops. And so, cause it's important for us as coaches to get spend time with the kids and for the, the national team staff to get to see. So we're biding our time trying to, so they're not acting quickly to, to decide to cancel. So.
James, any insight you have for the boy side?
You're the one who tells me most of what's going to go on. The, the fact that it's been delayed to this point is not good news, but it's also a par for the course, given what has been happening recently. So I know that we want to, I, I know that USA Waterpolo is interested in having an NTSC of some form. And so the fact that it's not necessarily on the calendar, you know, firmly on the calendar is, is to be expected in some ways.
Again, for those that, yeah, that might've missed it, we have no firm new information on the girls, uh, national championship, girls NTSC, or the boys NTSC at this moment, but I do know that USA Waterpolo is trying their best to have these events this summer at some point. And there should be some news coming up here in the coming weeks and that'll be coming from the national office directly. And again, there are no, there, all the FINA events from the summer have been canceled. So even if the national teams were to travel, they, yeah, there are no terms to travel to. So now we're going to get into the meat of the bones, the Southwest Zone ODP program. So, um, just in general, so James, so, so what is the purpose of the Southwest Zone ODP program?
It's multifaceted. So there are, but, but you can basically break it down into sort of training and teaching on the one side, and then evaluation on the other. So I know that we've changed the way that we've talked about the program over the five years that I've been involved in it. Meaning that, uh, you know, some years the national office will really want to hammer away that, you know, this is not an evaluation program, but everybody knows that it is. So it's not to deny that. But what I think Chris and I and Joe as well have been trying to do for the past five years is to ensure that this is absolutely a training opportunity for those who are newer to the sport or her on borderline, you know, who are just trying to improve. So the purpose of the program is that is for you to be evaluated for potentially becoming part of the USA Water Pipeline, but also to get you in front of coaches from all over the country, including us, who are dedicated to helping players get better, no matter what that means.
Yeah, there's, and there's, and there's a ton of camps and each camp covers kind of different aspects of Waterpolo. And everybody can improve their fundamentals, everybody. Chris, do you want to jump in and add anything to that?
Sure. I mean, I think the, one of the biggest focus for ODP is to improve the overall skill of the athlete that can maybe just hear something a little different. The way I say it and be exposed to somebody coming in from the national team staff. Or so they, they use these opportunities to hear things a little bit different, something maybe a new skill and they can take it back to their club. And maybe they're, they tell their coach and their coach can reach out to the, the coaching staff. I think just overall, it's a way to improve our Southwest Zone coaching and playing abilities. So.
Yeah. And so James, can you take us from the process for an athlete at least as far as from their camp to the selection for them, for the Utah trip or the West Region, and then to the ODP National Championship and the, and the possible, in the possibility for the national team selection camp.
Sure. Just a little note is that, you know, we've had our first athlete from Arkansas, sorry, I said Arkansas, from Oklahoma recently. And so part of the, our, our task is to expand our footprint as well, because obviously there's plenty of talent in Texas. There's no problem with that, but we are the Southwest Zone and you know, I'm terribly, terribly proud of us being Texan, but there are four, you know, other states around us that we're trying to expand into as well. The, the process is, I was going to say simple, maybe it's not so simple. So what we do is offer in this year in particular, we're going to offer three one-day camps that presumably will start in September. So for any athlete, they are encouraged to attend a camp and are, we, well, we'll get to the point about what the requirements are. I think a bit later, but you attend these one-day camps, they're between five and six hours. They will be led in some way or another by a guest coach, somebody from hopefully around the country. Because as we say every year, Chris and I say this over and over again, everybody in the state basically knows who we are and have heard us, you know, trying, leading drills over and over again. So it's always good to have another set of eyes on, on our athletes. So these camps take one day. At the end of the third camp, Chris and I are, and each of our coaches, the, the, the age group coaches will convene in order to select a team that will go to West Region Championships in January. And actually for that, we, we pick up to 18 players, I think. That's right. Yeah. 18. And so that's allows us to put together two teams, which is what happened for the boy side, at least last year. As we, we took two teams each to Utah, Salt Lake City, which is where the West Region Championships were. West Region Championships ships are considered another chance for coaches to evaluate athletes. So we do that. We try to win. We try to do as well as we can. And then from those athletes that attend West Region Championships, we select our national team. Well, what I call the travel team, it's, it's the team of Southwest Zone athletes that we're going to take to national championships, wherever that might be in California. So that process takes place. When we go to national championships, the athletes will be evaluated by coaches on the ground there who will then proceed to select the players that they want to attend national team selection camp. So if you're a development level player, you're being considered for a spot, or at least a spot to try out for USA Waterpolo's development national team, which theoretically will travel and go play against other countries. So that's generally speaking, the process, tell me if I'm missing anything, Chris.
I believe the number for West Region, we could have up to like 28, two teams of 14. So like not an A and a B team, but a two, a mixed team.
Right. Yeah.
We were had that opportunity if, if the numbers dictate. So, I mean, I kind of look at it, it's, it's like a pyramid. So we have the widest base of players playing would be at the, the local and the club level. Then the next round would be those who come to an ODP camp to learn and to be evaluated. From there, then we select another pool of athletes that go to the West Region. From there, from the West Region, we cut it down to select a few, one team of 14 to make the national championship. And then the national team staff select for the national team selection camp. And then from the national team selection camp, then to make the national team. And so we have had members of the Southwest Zone, boys and girls qualify or be selected for the national team. So, you know, we have, uh, you know, we're, we're developing and we're growing. So it's just the opportunities for our athletes to be exposed to better, I mean, good coaching, good players, be surrounded by that kind of, have that playing opportunity yet, that maybe your club may not travel. So you might need to, so you have this opportunity to go play with your rest of your zone. If the, the West Region and the national championship.
And I, and I know we've had a lot of boys the last, ever since we started this whole kind of the camp process, but the girls have really grown the last couple of years, Chris, right?
Correct. Yeah. Like we, we've had a, an increase in girls coming out and so they're developing and it's great to see the, especially at the younger levels. You know, I know USA Waterpolo just kind of goes by FINA guidelines in terms of the age groups. And so some years it's a little more difficult to get the, the girls out, depends on if it's a single birth year, age group or a double year. So, you know, some years cadets have been a single year and then like last year, the youth were a single year, which makes even on the boy side, makes it a little harder to get athletes out. So, but we're, we're continuing to grow and I'm excited about that.
Yeah. And, and, and I think James, you kind of alluded to it, that this is an opportunity for athletes. And yes, we've been growing, but there's still a huge need for more athletes out there. And like, it's just, I just see it as a great opportunity for athletes to get great coaching, consistent coaching and great opportunities that either that are going to be on top of their club stuff, or if their, if their club does not, yeah, does not provide it.
So I think that, you know, anytime you have the opportunity to hear something possibly from another coach, you know, I do coach education multiple times a week from anybody I can find in the, around the country. And so I'm trying to learn. So, you know, I look at, I, I've never going to try to stop learning. And so hopefully I can pass that knowledge on to any kids who are willing to come to a camp. So.
Awesome. And then there's plenty of opportunities for the coaches to be there as well. Hey, James, now you mentioned that there's three camps. Now the, yeah, like the athletes who are, are coming, how many camps? Yeah. They have to, to make in order to be selected for the Utah trip and yeah, and maybe one of those top 28 teams or those top 28 players.
Yeah. So this year we've decided to change things slightly. So typically, well, I would say the last four or the five years, any athlete who wanted to be considered for whatever the postseason, so to speak, was, would have to attend at least one camp. We are going, we have permission from USA Waterpolo to go scout individual players at maybe a specific tournament, but maybe not. It could be just in generalized scouting of players. And certain ones of them will be considered for the team if they, even if they don't attend one camp, but they still must pay for the equivalent of one camp and they must go to West Region Championships to be considered for the, for the national team. For the rep, for those who are not necessarily part of that group, then attending one camp is fairly required. So, yeah, so that, that's, that's been a change that's been prompted by inputs that we've gotten from our groups of parents, from, uh, from program leaders, from coaches, is that we're, we are endlessly trying to balance the, basically the notions of being fair, so that everybody is given a fair chance, which is a hundred percent true, but also putting the best possible team together that is within reason, right? So it's not, we're not going to chase down anybody who doesn't want to be part of the program, but we want to offer this for those that we, you know, the coaches largely know who most of the best players in the state are from the stamp, especially at the youth level. So those who are the more developed ones, but I, I would say that this is, this is a way for us to change the methodology so that it allows us to have the best, most competitive teams that we can possibly bring to California.
And those athletes are going to be few and far between, but for the, but for the normal athlete, everybody should be making one camp as much as possible. And plus, if you're going to be paying for it, you might as well go attend a camp and learn something too. So. And then, and then these camps do cost money. So Chris, are there scholarship opportunities for the athletes?
Yes, I believe so. Like USA Waterpolo does provide scholarship opportunities if you'll check into that. And I think they have shielded pricing, so there's other kind of opportunities. I, I think I want to piggyback on what James said. I think we as coach, the coaching staff are going to make an effort to tournaments, maybe not, uh, not just talk to or try to identify potential athletes that may have not participated in ODP in the past. And say, hey, Coach Joe, we know this so-and-so at this last tournament that we were at. Maybe you want to see if you can encourage that athlete to come be a part. And then I would talk to you and say, you, you mind if we go visit with them and tell them that they could make the West Region team? They have a good chance at it, you know, that they'd be a, a prime candidate for participating. So having kind of like a zone identification plan through not just kids who, we take the ones who show up. We kind of go out and kind of encourage those who may have said, well, what's the point? I'm not going to, because I've heard that these excuses, excuses, reasons why they, well, I'm not going to do it because I know this player is better than me. And so they, I'm not going to do it because I, what's the point? I'm not going to make the national team.
Yeah. My point is not to go to the ODP camp to make the, even the zone team or the national team is to go learn, yeah, some new skills and knowledge. And, and, and I think that gets lost in the shuffle at times and I'm glad you kind of, uh, kind of just, uh, kind of laid that out for everybody. Now, um, again, anybody, if you have questions, please feel free to unmute yourself, ask your question, even if you're interrupting us, or if you want to ask in the chat feature, yeah, that's okay too. This is a open forum. So, um, and now I know that we've kind of mentioned this a little bit, we have some new camp dates, you know, for this upcoming fall. Hopefully this upcoming fall, right? So hopefully this upcoming fall. So, um, right now we are slated to have the first Austin camp on Sunday, September 20th. In Austin, of course, the, the specific location is still to be determined, but hopefully at the UT Swim Center. The second camp is going to be in Houston on Sunday, October 18th at the CFISD of an auditorium. That's in Northwest Houston. That is where it's been the last couple of years in, yeah, in Houston. And then the final camp is going to be, um, I believe it's November 29th on, on, on Sunday, November 29th at the Louisville ISD West Side in, yeah, in North Texas. And then after that, then there is the Utah trip in early January, and then the ODP National Championships in March of, of 2021. So instead of having the camps back-to-back days like we did this past fall, we are now going to have a kind of a camp in, yeah, in September, a camp in October, a camp in November. Now, um, now Chris, so I know there's been some back and forth between like either a two-day camp or a, or a one-day camp, or kind of why, why were they so close? Why did we come up with these new dates and times?
I think we wanted to give the opportunity for the athletes, if maybe a weekend wasn't the, that best weekend for them to make it. And so if we spread it out over the three months, then hopefully that everybody gets to have that opportunity to make it. And one day is also less time commitment in terms of maybe the athletes have high school swimming or swim meets on Saturdays that could conflict. And so we wanted to limit it to Sundays throughout the fall and September, October and November.
Okay. All right. All right, James. Now another new thing for this upcoming season is James is going to kind of step into a new role. So James, do you want to talk to everybody about it?
I've been, I've been appointed king of the program. So this is good. I'm going to take a role that I call technical director. There's no title for this. I'm going to step away from coaching on the deck more than I have in the past. I have a person in mind or people in mind to take a spot on one of the teams for the boy side. Chris is going to remain the girls head coach, but my role is going to be more of the sort of organizing, the communications, getting things all set up. I will still travel with the team. If I feel like it, I will still coach on the deck. I believe I've, I've been told that that's not a bad idea by the national office. So yeah, we're going to change that slightly so that there's somebody who's sort of overseeing all of the communications that take place, whether it's boys or girls.
And, and I think that's a, that's a great step, a great step. Are y'all, are y'all going to have the same coaches kind of moving forward, Chris, on the girl side?
Correct. Well, right now we're, we, we still have for the youth, Sabrina Carlisle and Brendan Dionne and Chris Ellis for the cadets. And so we are looking for, so I'll be an assistant coach for the cadets and for the development will be me and Daniel Cox.
And James, so you're going to have to hire a new coach now, James, for, for, I guess the development group or kind of mixed, or kind of mixed coaches around a little bit?
James, I think I was muted. So, right. Um, I, I, it's to be determined. I'm going to, I have, like I said, I have people in mind, but we might be shifting some roles. Spencer Dornan remains the head coach of the youth team and Jeff Otten remains the coach for the cadet team. I may hire somebody to just take the development team, or I may shift some people around. So we'll, we'll, we will figure that out. But generally speaking, we had Troy Goddard last year was my assistant. He did really well. Tom Andrew was the assistant for the youth. He did really well. Ahmad was the assistant for Jeff. Very pleased with everybody's coaching last year. So we'll, we'll generally speaking, retain that same team and probably have one additional.
Well, good, well, good, well, good. And then obviously, I mean, with, with your time, that's going to be more focused on the admin and the technical director stuff. There's going to be a bigger presence as far as the social media aspect of the Southwest Zone, kind of, kind of ODP and getting the word out there about different things, correct?
In theory, yeah. No, that's a part of my mandate is I started the, the most of the, well, I'll toot our generalized horn a little bit. The reputation of the Southwest Zone, aside from being, you know, the, the people love our kids. They love the way that our teams present themselves when we go and they travel. It's a point of big pride for me. We also have been really fortunate and sort of leading the charge for, for the way that other zones have copied us. So we've had our social media for a while. It could always improve. There's no question about that. We were the first one to have our own website. We were the first one to have communications that was done, you know, you know, a slightly more sophisticated email list than other groups have. We've made it a point of pride to make sure to communicate as much as we possibly could to our athletes, our families and so on. So that's going to continue and then, you know, it's going to improve because I'll just simply have more time to do it.
Yeah. So what are the Facebook pages and the, and the website and the Twitter account?
Twitter is SWZ underscore ODP. I wish we could change that, but we can't. So SWD underscore ODP, and then everything else is the reverse. So Facebook is ODP SWZ and Instagram is ODP SWZ.
Nice. All right. Well, good. Just go, yeah, just go definitely check that out out there. And some new aspects, also this upcoming ball is going to be, um, again, we're going to be encouraging a lot of coaches to come out to the ODP camps. Please come out. We are going to be, there's going to be a program kind of for the coaches, a little bit of an introduction for the coaches, but also for the parents as well. So the parents are like, like that are, that are sitting in the stands. We're, so we're going to try to do some different parent education sessions kind of during each of the ODP camps. Thoughts on that, Chris?
Yeah, I think that, uh, you know, like any coach is welcome and not just, hey, you go stand up there and don't bother us. No, you can sit in the, the meetings that we have beforehand and talk about the preparation and the, the, what's going on throughout the, the workouts, the practice session that day, the training session, get to interact and meet Jesse Smith and these, you know, like these coaches from around the country just come. And it's free. It's pre-education. Come be a part of it. Uh, if you want to step in and help out, you can, or you can just sit there with a notebook and take notes. All are welcome. We as a zone will be better if I, everything that I share and everything that people learn, I've gotten from, you know, that I, I know I got from somebody else. And it's a compilation of something that I've figured out, who I learned from every time somebody comes in, I try to get, glean something from them. So the more you come out and, you know, like it will make the zone better. And you take home to your club and to your high school and to your, whatever, you know, that you're involved with, that will make our zone better. So do not feel intimidated. Do not feel like that is, oh, you'll be in the way. No, just sit there and say, I'm here to watch. And/or I'll help out any way I can. And so we'd be happy to have anyone.
And James, are you going to be able to, to kind of be helping those coaches that are going to be kind of showing up now with your, with your new role?
That is, uh, that is one of the benefits of that is that I'll be able to step out and talk to these coaches. Just, Chris was suggesting this as well. It's, I, I welcome absolutely as many coaches as we can get on the deck to, to observe especially those teams, the coaches that come in from out of the state, because again, you're, we're exposed to them more often than they would be to, than somebody like Gavin Arroyo or Brian Flax. And so for me, it's just a matter of courtesy. It's like you can be involved, as a coach, you can be in as, as involved as is reasonable. If you start to, you know, if, if, if it basically you're, you're, the coach is unable to do his job or her job any longer, then you know, that will, we might want to step aside. But other than that, it's just go ahead, ask questions. I'll just anecdotally, one coach that who came to Houston one time, a great person who should have been there was asking me all these questions and I just said, look, give me about five minutes. I need to get these, you know, kids ready and then went over and talked them for like 10. So it's, it's, we're going to need.
I think James has frozen up a little bit. So.
Let me, I'll piggyback on it. Like I, I know, for example, I didn't even mention this, but the goalies, there's always a national team goalie staff and coach there. So if you're not great at coaching goalies, come and watch what they do for eight hours in one day with goalies, how to train them, evaluate them, how to film them, how to, the work on skills. So, you know, I, one day myself, I said, uh, you know, we got a light number of kids. Can I go spend the first session, uh, you know, first two hours with Sean Nolan, the national team goalie staff? So there is something for everybody that if you, if, if you have that opportunity, because I know very few of us are, are experts in the goalie field. And so we're always, and we don't have goalie coaches like some big clubs that are like, oh, this is the, the goal, goalkeeping directive. So that's just another, I just thought of that as well, another opportunity.
Yeah. Well, I, I just got a text, James's power went out at his house. So that includes his kind of wireless. So he'll, he'll jump on, he'll jump back on whenever he can. Now, I mean, and it's not just, it's not just you and the head coaches and the national coaches. You also have like this past year, you guys had new assistant coaches, correct?
Correct. We were able to, the, for the first time, ODP allowed us to have paid staff for, to assist each one, to allow us to have two teams. If the numbers of enough kids came to the camps to, or wanted to travel to the ODP West Region. So.
So, I mean, there are a ton of coaches on the pool deck for each of these camps. Again, these camps are about, it's not necessarily be about being selected for a national or the, like the zone team and then the national team. It's about learning new skills and each camp is different. So kind of give us an idea about from camp one to camp two to camp three, as far as like, you know, like, and like an idea about kind of the different skills and such that, and kind of, kind of how you guys approach each camp.
We do get instructions from the national team staff from Brian Linton and the, uh, so each camp will be around the country. So we camp one, uh, the theme will be perimeter defense or the individual skills involved with perimeter defense or movement skills coming over hips, shot blocking, the things that that might be the theme, theme for that each of the sessions. So, uh, they are designed and were instructed by the national team staff. So it's, it's uniform. I mean, we have the freedom to do, uh, you know, slight variations for each skill, but for the most part, it's, uh, the skills are dictated. And so they change from camp to camp. So it's not the same camp three times in a row.
And these are the same skills that a kid is learning in Southern California or in New England or in Florida or in Washington State. So these are, these are the same things from around the country.
Right.
So now, I mean, this is a new thing that happened this, yeah, this past ODP season was the trip to Utah, the west, yeah, the West Region tournament. How'd that go from the Southwest Zone perspective, boys, girls?
I, I think it was great. I think, uh, we, we were right. Oh, I know for like my group, we were right on the number of like 15 or 16. It was tough to, not enough for two teams, but we actually came up with some solutions, talking with the national staff, how to, you know, if we have that high roster number, not enough for two, but, um, that we can kind of divide it up and then let everybody play on a second team a couple of times. So instead of getting four games, you might, everybody will get six, but we'll break it up into that other, and, and they're not done A and B teams. It's two equally split teams. So I think that was a great opportunity. Uh, we played a festival format. So there wasn't, it wasn't about winning and playing to a championship. You know, for our age group, we just, we had our set four teams that we played, which was fantastic. And, you know, we worked on things. Uh, everybody played. We just, we had our set four teams that we played, which was fantastic. And, you know, we worked on things. Everybody played. At least half the game. That's that's I I'm real big on that. And so I I'm watching, all right, there's a goal. It's about four minutes in or two minutes. All right, you get two minutes. Everybody up, you know, like, and so I I try to make sure everybody gets those playing opportunities because for as a coach, we're trying to. Teach them during those game situations, not just evaluate them, it's the teach as well. So they get that experience to say, okay, in this situation, next time do this. And so I I think with the boys, they had two teams in all age groups, which was fantastic. And so I think the. The girls, I I think the kids had a great experience being in Utah and January is kind of neat before we for the games, we went out and. Checked out the mountains and got a little snow while we were there. So it was it was a great experience.
I was there also, and I thought it was a great experience. Yeah, for the kids, the snow, the speed, yeah, the speech getting great, kind of right, yeah, right next door. James, you're back with us. How was how was the trip to Utah on the boy's side?
Yeah, fun. It's just like Chris was saying, you know, the the we got tons of playing time. We did actually quite well for our team. So that wasn't. That that didn't hurt. And then they went out and threw snowballs at each other. So it was a good trip altogether.
Yeah, we're good. So now, while so while I have you here still, and before you get cut off again, is. How are the new rules, the new USA Water Polo rules and the kids kind of adjustment to that at the at the West Region Tournament and then also the National Championships?
Well, this is where I have to give credit to the coaches in Texas because. And I can speak mainly for development, although I saw the other teams play as well, but development boys. Except there, there are some teams, including my own, I have to say, where I hadn't done a good enough job teaching these rules, but most of the other athletes were perfectly aware of how those rules work. And and to the point where it was to our advantage, like we knew the rules better than the other teams. So. I like the new rules in general. It presumably opens up the front of the cage for some more scoring opportunities and more movement. I've noticed at the international level, it's not quite so, you know, so pronounced, but at our level it was. And so it was overall, I'm a I'm a fan.
So, Chris, you're also on the high school side. You know, Chris also coaches the Deton Geyer kind of high school team for boys and girls. Thoughts on the new rules for next year's high school season?
I I really like them. I think it's fantastic. I think it'll speed up the the game, less whistles, more movement. I think it will allow the average spectator it to be more like basketball. So, you know, like you don't have to. Stop and throw the ball all the way back. You can get yourself live and moving again. And so it's just. If somebody gets grabbed from behind right in front of the cage, it's a penalty. You know, like so things that have made. Make logical sense, but in water polo. Circles, the advantage rules, et cetera, it hadn't made much sense. And so I I think it will. Keep the game moving a little more exciting because, you know, it it takes away that five meter foul and shoot, which to me is boring. You know, like, and now it's at six meters. So if they're fouled at five, so they're going to be a little farther away, give the goalie a little more chance to block that. It's not like a. A guarantee. And so you I think it's, I think it's going to be a positive overall. And since the kids have had so long and the referees. It's going to be an easy transition for us.
And the one thing that I liked, and I mentioned this last week at the town hall meeting, was it makes the rules more black and white. And anytime that they're more black and white, it's going to be easier on the athletes, it's going to be easier on the spectators, it's going to be easier on the coaches. And really, it's going to be much easier on the referees too. So and was it on? So now, are there any questions out there for Chris and James? Anything O D P? I do appreciate you. Yeah, I'd like you guys coming on. Again, Chris Cullen, the girls, the girls head coach for O D P for the Southwest Zone. And James Smith, the boys head coach for O D P in the Southwest Zone. Again, these town hall meetings. Are every Tuesday at six thirty P M. Next week. We're going to be doing playing water polo in college. Like, what is the process for doing water polo in college? And I'll be running that session. And then Texas Coach to Coaches are it's like this upcoming Thursday at twelve thirty P M. We oh, yeah, we have Coach Alex from St. Mark's and Pegasus. And then starting next week. We're going to be doing the Texas Coach to Coaches every Tuesday and Thursday at twelve thirty P M. All right. So we have a ton of people that want to share. This is great. I appreciate like everybody kind of showing up. And I and don't forget to visit T X Water Polo dot com. Everything, the archives for the Southwest Zone Town Hall Meetings and the Coach to Coaches are there. Yeah, along with a ton of other information. Again, if I'll be sticking around for a couple more minutes if anybody has any questions, but I do appreciate it. Everybody take care.
Thank you.